And getting to know the communities from the ground up. And I figure this would be another stop on my journey of trying to understand the layout. And literally, that's just the, you know, what challenges communities in the region are facing. And so I've been through a couple other county commissioner meetings. And then you guys are on my list because I also live in Cody. So, thank you. You're my commissioners. On a personal level. So, um, I just wanted to let you know that I'm here. I'm the new Amy Quick. And you'll be familiar with her. And she and I share office space. And she has now taken on the communications role with the organization. And so she's able to focus a little more on our marketing efforts, our website, which we have a new website design, which is beautiful. And I've been kind of slowly but surely learning from her. So, a couple of different projects going on in Park County. And some of them you're probably aware of already. But I just wanted to kind of give you the land, the land from my perspective on what's going on. Um, so first off, I hopefully you all saw that the legislature just approved the Blue Sky Program, which will allow small businesses to purchase other small businesses. And it's kind of a lending program. We're still in the process of writing the rules for that and what that will look like. But hopefully that will become a way and a path that business owners can follow in order to not like, I guess, like, what's the best way to say it? Purchasing businesses that have been well established. And possibly the owner of the business is looking to retire and move away from production or move away from whatever the business might be. And it's basically like a path to find lend, like financing for new business owners to come in and purchase those. So like a legacy business, say, that you're ready to kind of pass the reins on to somebody else. This will kind of open up that path a little bit more to keep Wyoming businesses open.
Is it just a quick question? Is it mostly loan financing or is there a grant loan?
It's mostly loan financing, I believe. Yep. Yeah. But we're trying to just make it a little bit easier and try to pave that path a little bit more evenly. So that businesses aren't leaving or closing their doors and leaving a gap in their study. So I think that will be promising hopefully. And the rules will be published by July at the latest. And we'll kind of start to see things come to fruition hopefully. So, yeah. Um, so that's a recent win for us, I think. That's going to be a good thing. And you all are really aware of the Land Use Plan. And I've also been involved with Joy. And that's been really great to see come to fruition too. And it's a really neat also from the perspective of Matiti down in the south. So they are also doing a strategic doing program right now. And what we like to think of as strategic doing is just like a facilitated effort at implementing a plan. So they have a plan. They have like an economic development plan or like a town plan. And we get groups of citizens together. Anybody who's interested or anybody who's a player in the community, like the school superintendent and the mayor and the town council members and business owners. And all of them come and sit down in the same room and have conversations. Which sounds really simple, but it's actually really complicated if you think about just making sure that all the right people that are invested in the community are present. Um, so it's like a public meeting and they all come together. And we divide into small groups and discuss the projects or the problems that they see that they want to tackle first. So we've come up with several different themes. And then they come together in small groups and actually think of like, what is this, you know, loaning route? Or what is the next step that we could take to make progress that might be achievable within 30 days? Um, so we meet every 30 days. And they come up with a new step to accomplish something, whatever that something might be. Um, so for Matiti, they've identified connectivity as an issue that they want to tackle. They identify housing as an issue that they want to tackle, not unlike so many other places. And they've also identified, just getting the word out, like community promotion, right? Like, but they have a lot of stuff going on in town. And maybe they have poor attendance. And maybe that's because people aren't aware. Or, you know, whatever the reason might be, they're trying to kind of figure it out, right? As a, as a small group. Um, so it's almost like a, you know, a little task force, you could say. So, yeah. Um, so as they're plugging away on that, they're also in the process of completing an application from the Business Council in order to build a new community center. So, a new community center. Yeah. This is just for the TV, probably. And I can't, thank you for bringing that to my attention. So, um, Matiti wants to build a community center. It started as like a recreation center. Um, but it's really interesting to see how that has worked and grown through conversations with them about, well, it's more than just a workout room. Um, it's, it's about after-school programming and basketball games. It's about creating a facility for seniors to come in together and to, you know, have conversations. And then maybe, um, you know, in the gym together afterward. Um, it's also possibly like a gathering place for business owners in town to come in and have a meeting space or live a classroom space. So it has this multi-purpose function. And so they're completing an application and they'll submit it by our June 1st deadline for a grant. So they will apply for the full amount available to them by grant. And hopefully that'll kind of catapult them into the construction process. And so we'll see how it all goes. Um, but I wasn't sure if any of you weren't aware of that yet. And I think it's pretty exciting for, especially at a time of just over 300, um, to have a facility where people can gather is really key to not only just retaining businesses and business owners that are already there, but to attract new homeowners, new, new people moving in. And they have seen it in blocks, just like Cody has. So.
The rules of the Wyoming Business Council, will the county commissioners be involved at all in supporting that? Or need to be involved to support that?
You know, I think if you wouldn't like to support the project, I think a letter of support would go a long way in helping them make their case. And if you are interested, I could put you in touch with the coordinator for that. Her name is Brody. And she's the red district coordinator. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So those are the big things happening in Park County. And then there's, um, you know, I represent other counties as well. And so I'm with Big Horn County pretty frequently, both north and south. And I'm over in Washtenaw County pretty regularly. And I'm in Hotspur County as well. So I'm kind of driving all over the place. You'll see this State Explorer driving around. And if you, you know, see somebody driving it, it's probably me.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, Kristen, thanks for coming.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
A couple of things, I don't know if you're 100% aware, but if Park County is going to be putting on, hosting a congressional tour later this summer, then we'd like you to get involved with as, as goes forward in Molly to keep us up to date on that. But we're going to be bringing congressional people into Park County in conjunction with Park, uh, Big Horn, Washtenaw, Hotspur County for a tour. It'll be August 14th through the 18th. Uh, second question I have, I guess. Um, you mentioned the Land Use Plan and how that, in relation to the businesses here in Park County and how that can be affected or can help in ways. And something I think is overlooked a lot, maybe at that pay of mind, but agriculture, we have hundreds of, agriculture, hundreds of small businesses as well. Park County has the opportunity right now to work with a consultant to put a study together for the economic effects of what agriculture does here in Park County. If there's nothing out there that we can find that can give us good answers to that. Um, we're hoping to maybe possibly work with other counties to lower the cost of that. Is there any money available through the Wyoming Business Council to, because it would be a statewide?
I mean, ideally, yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be good information statewide, not because it's for the Big Horn Basin. So is there anything you can help us with on that? Has Lee Livingston been in part?
He has. And through Rebecca Burns, who is Powell Economic Partnership. And she and I have been in lots of conversations about what the benefit to, uh, not just a Park County agricultural study, but also a Big Horn Basin. You know, can we broaden it? Can then the company share the costs? And if it would fit one of the Business Council programs. And so she and I are in touch about that. And, um, you know, I think a planning grant might be something worth pursuing. But it will, basically, it will need to depend kind of on what the outcome of the study will be. You know, will it just be a set of data? Or will it actually be put into play some way? How do you plan to implement the plan once you understand the data? So I think that's what the Business Council would probably be looking for, is like what the outcome could be.
And who makes those final decisions?
So, um, the Business Council has a board that all decisions are run through. And then ultimately the state land and investment board.
And we have, and we have two of them.
Oh, right, yeah, sure. Yeah. All smile, all live on, and say yes. Uh, but ultimately the decision will be with the SLIP.
We're working on it.
So we're working on it. And I think it has great potential. Um, and like I told Rebecca, I think the Business Council recognizes that it is so important to understand exactly what impact agriculture has. Because it's beyond just the farmers and the landowners. It's way beyond that. Um, it's business owners in insurance or in equipment sales and, you know, everything in between. Um, so understanding that, I think, makes a ton of sense. Um, it's just a matter of how it will fit within the Business Council program and who might be the best fit for the plan that you, you all would like to see happen.
Yeah, I think it could be a great fit for all of the information.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and I encourage Rebecca as well to reach out to the university extension offices in case that's something they might be interested in helping with or facilitating. Or, you know, I don't know exactly what programs they have, but I think it's worth pursuing as well.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Chair, how often do the Business Council board?
We meet quarterly.
Correct.
Yeah. So our deadlines are pretty staggered and quarterly, right? So our next deadline for submitting applications, so say for the agriculture planning grant, if you wanted to submit an application, June 1st would be the next upcoming deadline. And then our board wouldn't meet until September. And then SLIP meets after that.
So if the board does give a recommendation to SLIP, their next SLIP meeting after the June 1st meeting?
Is most likely October. Yeah.
Just a little bit of an issue for us if we want the information as we work through this Land Use Plan.
Exactly.
Okay, well, I know they're working on it.
Yeah. Yeah, because they were, yeah, we're, um, having to work within the plan that's put in front of us and the statutes that we have in play and how that all comes to be. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts, questions?
I'm really glad you brought that up, Mr. Gill. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks for having me. Yeah, good luck. Have fun.
The next thing on our agenda is a public hearing, so we'll have to wait until night 5:00. We want to start that one, so you've got about five minutes.
On the west and on the east, and it shows that gravel driveway coming off of Schultz Drive to the building. Terms of municipal review, this project is not within a mile of the city of Cody in this case, so that review is not required. Legal notices, we put legal notices in the Cody Enterprise, one occurred on March 1st, one was on March 8th. Written notice was sent out to neighboring property owners on February 24th of this year. We shared the staff report with all of you and with the applicant. Agency referrals, we notified agencies we thought would have an interest. We notified the treasurer, they come in, county taxes are paid. Wheaton Pest, Larry stated that a long-term access management plan will not be required. Our county fire district chairman had no comments. Cody Canal, they responded, they have no objections to this change in use. Public Works responded, they addressed, you all had a chance to see their comments. They addressed potential traffic impacts and use of the road. They recommend that the new business apply for new address. They said a runoff to the erosion control plan will not be required. Damon Fish responded, they really had no wildlife concerns. Madam Chair, we've not had any public comments. P&amp;Z reviewed this on February 16th of this year. They recommended approval. At the time, they recommended that a response be received from Wheaton Pest, that has occurred. They also suggested that the property owners get a building permit for the structure. That has occurred, and Mrs. Fink also paid the investigation fee. Terms of approval standards, compatibility and impacts, I mentioned again what Charity plans to do. She, right now, will be the only employee. She said in the future she may hire or bring on an apprentice or additional employee. The work will all be indoors in that shop building. I mentioned the size. Charity said the work is largely quiet because it's done by hand and indoors. She said with mechanized tools are required, there'll basically be a cordless drill, a drillable tool, and a sewing machine. Charity said the number of customers will likely be few in number. The customers will frequently shop by appointment only. She estimates a small number of vehicle trips per week to drop off or pick up items. No domestic sewer or water or natural gas is proposed. However, I will mention that in the residence, there is domestic water, there is sewer, that's those facilities Charity will plan to use. This building will not interfere with any irrigation, ditches, or water rights. As I mentioned, there is an existing drive. The days of operation will be Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The building not within a county, not within 20 feet of a county road right away. No covenants proposed or existing. This structure has outdoor lighting, however, those lights are small and downward directed, so there should be no light trespass. This property has no known non-conformities, no nuisances have been reported. We determine the soils report will not be required. I mentioned access. Northwest River Water does provide water to the residence. This is in the Cody Canal irrigation district. Again, there should be no impacts on the irrigation. Terms of parking, non-residential uses, which this is essentially business, one parking space for each 400 square feet of floor area. Essentially, that is one parking space. Our conclusion is that parking appears to be adequate, both for Charity and for, for, um, in Fremont customers. There is an existing septic in the residence that will be used at size for three bedrooms. Electricity is provided to this building, natural gas is not necessary. She's not proposing any signs. Solid waste, if any, will be disposed of by a private company. Of course, they'll have to conform to our regulations regarding that. Madam Chair, we have some findings we shared with you. I think we also, yes, we shared with you some pictures. And we're happy to answer questions, state of mind.
Here's to one, Mr. Gillen, and it had to do with the comment from Public Works with separate address. And I know we don't hear that very often. I don't know if that's basically for emergency services or what would happen if there's, you know, if she's calling from the shop for an issue versus calling from the house for an issue. Can you address that a little bit?
You know, I don't remember the letter. I could look at it real quick to see if it goes into detail, but I assume it's for emergency uses. If there are two addresses, to be honest, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what will happen. I guess in a way, maybe good news is the shop building is, is not far from the residence.
Is there, is there a sign, will there be a sign on the shop building that it is the saddle shop, or?
Not, not to my knowledge.
Okay, interesting. Any other questions or concerns? This is a public hearing, so is there anyone that would like to comment from the public?
If I may?
Yes, please identify yourself.
I'm Charity Hawkes, owner of the saddle salon and current operator. I just wanted to say that I'm just trying to expand and grow capital. My goal with this building is to get a little bigger. I started in a bedroom, I moved to a shed, and now I'm trying to get into a little bigger building. With the intention of building capital to come back into town. I'm not going to be making a bunch of noise to disturb neighbors. I know that this is slightly out of the way, and it's more of a private area, which is fine with me currently because I do everything by appointment. And Denise, I've known her for years, so it's a good relationship, so she can box me around as she needs to. So, but if you had any questions, then I'd be more than happy to address any of those.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Well, just in terms of a separate address.
If you just.
Oh, Denise Fink, property owner.
Thank you.
And soon to be neighbor. If you were calling emergency service, they would be going to our house anyway. So.
Right. I think the discussion with emergency services, if you would call them and give them the address, they're going to come to the house. If she calls in because of a problem, they're still going to go to the house.
Well, actually, you know, when I call them for my husband, they tend to go to the back of the house, which is right next to the shop because we have a half circle driveway and then the straight driveway back, and it's easier for them to go in and out that way, so they know us.
It's a suggestion, not, yeah, not in the rules, so just discuss it. Thank you. Any further?
I'll move over, second.
Moved in second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move, we approve the special use permit for the saddle salon.
Moved in second to approve the special use permit as requested for saddle salon, special use permit number 228. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioners.
Oh, hey. Do it to me. I'll get that for you.
We're just waiting on resolution number 40.
One, uh, 22.
Thank you.
Sixteen.
You know what, let me make sure that's wrong. But I think that's. Oh, yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that was right. Twenty-two.
Okay. Next thing is also a public hearing, so we'll get it fixed.
That was a special use.
Yes.
What's the number?
We can probably get going. The next thing is a public hearing for Skip's Auto, special use permit number 230.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So for this project, the applicant is Larry Hart. This property is located in the Powell Planning Area, the zoning district is GRP. We did receive an application on January 11th of this year, included a site plan type of activities. And some statements indicated whether or not this use would impact neighboring properties, which of course is required within SGP. The statement, not the impact. So the applicant, of course, requests review and approval of the special use permit. It does include site plan review. It will be to operate an automotive and farm equipment mechanic business in it, which about 8,500 square foot shop building. And you can see a picture of that in figure one. We have classified this as major commercial business. Ownership of this property is the Hart family farm. In terms of history, we did discover at the leak through issuing permits that this use has, has been operating for a few years without a permit. So we met with the applicant's nephew, Skip Hart, about this. And we determined that what he was doing, or he wanted to do, would be classified as major commercial business. We said it would not be allowed. It is not allowed in the GRP. Of course, since then, we went through the variance request and variance has been granted. And I will mention that at this, up until now, no formal notice of violation has been issued. The structure that the use is in, it does have a building permit. There is a small waste water permit associated with the use. As I mentioned in figure one, there is a site plan drawing. To the bottom of this, it's Highway 295. Then right north of that, there is the existing residence. And then just north, a little bit east to that, is the shop building where the use will be occurring. But then there are a couple other shop buildings on the property. In terms of legal description, this use, we, we basically estimated that the use is going to be occurring on about a one and a half acre portion of this property. The location of this property is, is about five miles southeast of Powell. It's just on the north side of Highway 295. It does have an address of 397 Lane 13. As I mentioned, this is in the GRP zoning district. However, major commercial business uses are not permitted in that zoning district. However, the county commissioners did approve a variance request for Mr. Hart to go through this process, and that occurred in December, on December 7th of last year. In terms of neighboring uses, you can see in figure three. Neighbor uses are primarily agriculture. There are, well, there's probably just one residential close by. One to the southwest and then one to the southeast. And I'm sure, I will mention, I don't know if we made it clear, but on figure two and figure three, that white green shading is land in the ag overlay district. And this property does happen to be in an ag overlay district. Terms of site characteristics, as I mentioned, there is an existing residence. This use is in an existing shop, and there are two other shops being used on the property, basically for, either for personal use or for farm and ranch use. Terms of legal notices, public hearing notice was required. Both of those notices were in the Powell Tribune. One occurred on February 22nd of this year. The other one occurred on March 8th. We sent the written notice to neighboring property owners out on February 24th. The staff report was shared with all of you and with the applicant prior to today's hearing. Agency notice, referrals, a number of agencies were noticed. Park County Fire Protection One responded. They said they could provide protection as long as their fire equipment had access. MBU responded, they are currently serving this property in this building with gas. Well, when irrigation responded, they reviewed a head gate location, and they're confident that this use will not interfere with any of their infrastructure. What would like, the power responded, they said they continue to provide power to this use. And I believe they currently do provide power to the shop. YDOT has responded several times. Essentially, Madam Chair, there are, there are two accesses to this property, and evidently they are, they are too close. And so YDOT provided the applicant three options. Either move one of the accesses to have the 660 feet needed, eliminate one of the accesses, or have YDOT deny their access permit, and they could appeal. And so the applicant has appealed that decision. To my knowledge, we've not received, received a response back yet from YDOT regarding that appeal. To my knowledge. Park County Treasurer said property taxes are paid in full. Damon Fish responded, the wildlife coordinator has no wildlife concerns. Wheaton Pest responded, Mary did an inspection. She said a long-term plan will not be required. However, she is recommending that the applicant follow best management practices. The Wyoming State Fire Marshal has been involved, and I believe he's actually been out and inspected and probably talked to Skip. He said at this point, though, there's nothing else essentially that the applicant needs to do in order, and they don't need to have an official review from their office. So my understanding is this use is complying with what the fire marshal would like them to do. Our county Public Works responded. They also recommended that these, the residents and the use have two separate addresses. And they also said that the drainage and erosion control plan will not be required. We've not received, since, since the variance request, Madam Chair, we've not received any public comments regarding this SGP. P&amp;Z reviewed this special use permit on February 16th of this year. They recommended approval. They have some conditions. One was a review from the Wyoming State Fire Marshal. That condition has been met. We shared that evidence with you. They also had a condition, compliance with YDOT. Of course, that condition has not been met. That's not been finalized yet. Another condition of P&amp;Z was a, a response from Public Works. That condition has been met. Another condition was, recommended condition was that the applicant applied for building permit for the unpermitted sign. We think we do have that. The applicant has given us an application for that unpermitted sign. So that, I don't believe it has been permitted yet, but it will be permitted. In terms of compatibility impacts, again, this, the, the use will be in a main shop. It's about 80 by 100 feet in size. It's, it's, it was built to allow for large semi-trucks and large farm equipment. There are vehicle lifts in this shop. The applicant stated that constructing the building was to be used for providing mechanical services, full ag support and automotive support for neighbors and people around Powell. And he feels like the use is needed. There's demand for it. This is just north of Highway 295. Skip's Auto will, the hours of Skip's Auto will be 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Occasional longer, longer working days, occasional weekday work, and on occasion, working at night during the summer. Appsco would like to have more employees. That includes Skip Hart, the proprietor, and he'll have three part-time, non-resident employees. Vehicles to be repaired or that have been, been repaired. Skip feels will be on the site anywhere from 10 to 12 days. Some are complicated repairs, he said, especially for some of the larger equipment and could cause some vehicles or equipment to remain their own. Terms of, or in terms of building setback. This use, or this building is not within 20 feet of a county road right away. There are no covenants that are proposed or existing. This building does have outdoor lighting, however, those lights, and I think they show in the photographs, those lights are shielded and they are downward directed to limit light trespass. This property does not have any known non-conformities. No nuisances have been reported. Terms of soil conservation district, of course, this building was already built by the time the SGP was, was in the discussion. However, the applicant did provide a geotechnical report from 2015. I believe that was right before the structure was constructed. And we did receive a soils report from Powell Park Sport Conservation District. In terms of services and infrastructure, access roofing from State Highway 295. Again, we've not received a, a final response yet from YDOT. In terms of domestic water, there is an onsite well. And there is a bathroom in the shop. I did mention that there is a septic associated with that. There was a water, water quality test that was done. No coliform or E. coli was found. Nitrogen was detected in that water sample of 4.5 milligrams per liter. That's below the maximum contaminant level of 10. Fluoride was also detected, but that was below the maximum contaminant level. Arsenic, neither arsenic nor lead were determined. Sodium was detected at 485. I know you've heard me say this before, EPA recommends sodium not exceed 60 milligrams per liter. Right about 40 to 60 milligrams per liter. My understanding is where people who are sensitive to tasting sodium, that's when they can first taste it. However, sodium is a nutrient, so again, you know, typical responses, people on low sodium diets should be aware if they're drinking high sodium water. TDS was detected at a, at 17, 20 milligrams. Again, that's high. But essentially, that's, that's just cloudy water, some solids in the water, but, but nothing harmful, because all the other tests were negative. I mentioned the irrigation district. I will mention parking. Non-residential uses require a parking space for each 400 square feet of floor area. The, so we calculated, based on that, about 22 parking spaces would be required. The site plan shows 20. We feel that parking is adequate for the use. I mentioned sewage. There is a septic system serving the shop. Electricity is provided by Wilwood. Natural gas is provided by MBU. I mentioned the sign that is soon to be permitted. Solid waste will be disposed of by private companies. This, I will mention, Madam Chair, that this use isn't an ag overlay district, so that gives you an opportunity to, to comment, make suggestions or conditions on the use if you think the use might impact ag, or if you think ag might impact this use. Obviously, this use is in part designed to help work on ag equipment. And obviously, the, the applicant and proprietor knows they're in the middle of, of ag uses. And site plan review is required, Madam Chair, because of the size of the building and because of the size of the acreage. I'll just try to be real brief. Hazardous substances essentially are, are going to be handled in this building. Coolant, oil, grease, some of those things will be collected and then burned off in neighboring furnaces. And I believe there also is in the shop, there is a grease trap to capture that and to, to send it to an appropriate facility. This use is not expected to impact any lakes, reservoirs, or streams. Not expected to impact any wetlands. Not expected to impact any air quality. I mentioned it's in an ag overlay district. That's the only district, overlay district it's in. We have some findings. We have several recommended conditions. We're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Madam Chair, as far as getting approval, waiver from YDOT, how long does ag use take?
Well, if I remember the, the email or the letter they sent us, they said they would not expect to see anything until the end of March, if I remember correctly. At that, that's maybe, Madam Chair, that maybe is the simplest.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing, so I would ask if there's any public comments?
Scott Lewis, with the grant of the community, representing Larry Hart and the Hart family. We came for you to give the variance for this, and we were granted that, which we appreciate. Then we went to the SGP and we met with them and went through these conditions as well, and they, they approved it as well. On the condition that we get access from YDOT. The hearing is scheduled for March 25th at 9:00 a.m. in Cheyenne. And Larry Hart, as the property owner, plans to attend that meeting and, and go through with that appeal process. But we have been prudent as far as timing and, and tried to move this forward. In fact, when we were told that we were going to have this meeting today, we suggested that maybe we delay it because we don't have that piece of information. And it was suggested that we proceed, and if you would consider at least granting us a approval upon the condition that we get approval from YDOT, we would appreciate that. The other item was that we have applied for, from Public Works, to get a second address. And we've, we've also applied for permit for the sign. So we tried to comply with everything that we're aware of so far. If there's any other questions, make sure you're going to answer those.
Yeah, just a quick question so we can get it on the record. If, if your appeal of YDOT is denied, does the applicant anticipate basically appearing to whatever YDOT decision is, with their three options?
The other option, and the one that we've exercised, one of those options was to close down one of the accesses. Well, Larry comes and visits this place, this residence, maybe two or three times a year. So since, since having that comment, we have locked that, that access and eliminated that access. Basically, the only access we are using presently is the access to the shop, and the other one is locked. And if, if we are not granted the appeal, then we're going to eliminate that access.
Any further public comment?
I'd like to, quick. I'm Skip Hart. At the beginning of this, this very quickly for me became very overwhelming. I'd like to say thank you to the Commissioners for helping ease that, that burden. I'd also like to say to the planning and zoning office, they've been extremely helpful in walking us through this. And thank you.
Any other comments?
I'm Colonel Public Works, Public Chair.
Second.
Moved in second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? And all those in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, I move to approve special use permit, Skip's Auto 230. Site plan review with staff conditions. And it will just approve with conditions and condition is covered with YDOT. The conditions is approval of a YDOT or permit.
And you're including conditions one through five as listed?
Staff conditions, one through five.
Okay, so this is second to approve the SGP thirty-fourth Skip's Auto with conditions as stated. Further discussion? You're not all in favor?
I agree. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, commissioners.
One second. Thank you, Donald.
Okay, at this time, we have a public hearing for the good. Special use permit number two twenty-seven.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the applicants are Christopher and Mariah Good. This property is located in the Coney Power Rural Planning Area, the zoning district is GRP. We didn't receive an application for this special use permit, which which does the site plan review also, on December seventeenth of last year, along with things, plant view documents, the type of use activities, and how there will be any negative impacts on neighboring property owners. Of course, the requested action is to approve this special use permit. It will allow, approved, a fireworks storage and distribution business in the existing shop and residences in the nearby vicinity, and in addition up to forty storage containers. You see the location of the property and the shop building and the storage containers of the residence. Madam Chair, that's all in figure one. We classify this as major wholesale business. In terms of history, going back to two thousand and eighteen, there was a permit for a single-family residence. I will, you had a chance to read our staff report. I will just say that at the time, it wasn't fully communicated to us that there would be an office inside that residence. Also, there was another permit for what was a forty-eight hundred square foot accessory use. Again, it wasn't clear completely to us that that would be for business use. It was our understanding it would be for personal use. We've, another note on the bottom of page one, we determined that the applicant has expanded the structure since it was permitted in two thousand and eighteen. Our understanding at the time it was built, the size of that structure was forty-eight hundred feet, and now I believe it's around ninety-six hundred feet. And there was no permit to expand that structure. Another his, other history, April twenty-fifth of last year, we didn't notice or found out that there was advertising of commercial sales on the property. There was a notice of violation. It was sent to the goods for unpermitted business and unpermitted structures, essentially the storage containers. On May tenth of last year, the goods came in and visited with us. There was obviously a conversation. Mr. Good talked about storing fireworks there for his own stores, mentioning, our understanding was eighteen storage containers. He did not want to make, at the time, a shop as storefront. He still does not, is my understanding. Has trucks for delivery, hopes to build another home on the property. Does have occasional fireworks displayed for vendors on his property, and he has held displays on the property for the public. We investigated some social media posts. There was an additional notice of violation letter sent on June fourth of last year in response to a letter received from Colin Simpson, their legal representative. Use is classified as a major commercial business, violation again for having unpermitted business use and unpermitted business structures. On June twenty-fourth of last year, Mr. Simpson submitted notes, appeal on behalf of the goods and a variance request. In July of last year, there was a letter from Mr. Simpson that withdrew the goods notice of appeal. They wanted to move forward with the variance request. And that, of course, that was heard in August of last year, and the Board of County Commissioners approved the variance request. And again, because this use is otherwise prohibited in that property. And again, Madam Chair, I just want to mention again, you've heard this, but our department, we want you to know this use is otherwise prohibited. The use has been operating in violation for several years. And I'll just say, the immensity of the use seems inappropriate based on the zoning district and what's allowed in that district. Legal description, this is property that is size thirty-three acres, the property size where it's located. Again, you had a chance to look at figure one. Figure two shows the location relative to Powell and Garland. This property is approximately three miles southeast of Garland. It's on, right on the north side of Highway fourteen A. It has an address of one twenty-seventh Highway fourteen A. I did mention this is in the GRP zoning district. Again, wholesale major business uses are prohibited. However, the goods did receive a variance to move forward and apply for an SGP. In terms of neighboring land use, you saw in figure three that some of the land use in the area is residential, some is agricultural. In terms of site characteristics, this warehouse is on a gently sloping parcel of land. Again, it's primarily in a nine thousand six hundred square foot structure. There is a residence just to the southwest. There is a loading dock on this building, and there are, or at least there were approximately eighteen storage containers, primarily on the north side of this building. In terms of legal notices, this is a public hearing. The notices were in the pouch of Hune. One occurred on February twenty-second of this year, one on March eighth. We shared or sent that certified letter to neighbors on February twenty-fourth of this year. A lot of agencies have been notified. We've attached, I believe, all those relative or relevant responses. I'll just try to mention briefly a few. We have been in contact with the fire inspector, Nick Hudson. He has inspected. He knows that this use is not open to the public. There'll be no retail sales there. And and I think as as late as last Friday, our planning director, Joy Hill, has been in contact with Nick Hudson. And my understanding is, all the bullets and and structure and all the sentences and paragraphs I've seen, Nick Hudson really has no concerns with what they're doing, in terms of setbacks, things like that. Department of Transportation, we've had a number of conversations with them regarding access from the highway. They did ultimately redefine the one existing access from a field access to a commercial access. So that has occurred. And they have said, and this is the top of page eight, YDOT did say that that commercial access permit does grant the goods an allowance for occasional fireworks displayed, so long as parking is contained on their property. YDOT said no parking will be allowed on US Highway fourteen A right of way. Game and Fish responded, August of last year, they have their wildlife concerns. Park County Fire Protection District responded, July of last year. They're able to provide fire protection as long as their equipment can get access. Treasure responded, taxes are current. Shoshone Irrigation responded. They do not have any obstruction area. So they're good with what the applicants have proposed. Garland Light and Power. We did get a bill from the goods, basically saying that electricity is provided. We also did receive a bill, a receipt, I guess, from the good, in regard to calling propane, indicating that propane is available and is provided. We even passed. Mary sent a letter July, or January this year, and she considered and talked about the goods disturbances. She said they will not be required to do a notches redevelopment plan, however, she's recommended best practices to be followed. Public Works responded with a letter. Again, Public Works recommended that the residents and the business have a separate address. Public Works also said a runoff erosion control plan will not be required. In terms of additional agency notifications, in August of last year, Joy Hill, our planning director, communicated with someone from ATF concerning this property. ATF said they they regulate display fireworks, not consumer fireworks. Of course, consumer fireworks is what's stored in these in these structures. ATF said that the applicants have a permit for display fireworks at a different location in Park County. ATF also said that the storage of display fireworks, fireworks at this location would be a storage violation, although they did say empty water stored here would be allowed. We did receive a public comment by phone in supportive issues. Planning and zoning reviewed this SGP application on February sixteenth of this year. They recommended approval. They had conditions. One was a formal response from Public Works. That condition has been met. Another response was, they asked the applicant to designate, identify the parking area that will be used when they have fireworks demonstrations. That condition has been met. The goods did supply us with a map. I believe we shared that with you. So there's another parking area for the display on further to the southeast. Additional communications, early in March of this year, Mr. Simpson contacted us in an email, not supportive of the idea from Public Works regarding two addresses. That's when he sent us the two parking areas being identified. Also, in that email, Mr. Simpson commented that the applicants will be contesting the setback distance proposed by staff and by the P and Z Commission, because he believes, the goods believe, counties should not be more stringent than state and federal codes. And you had a chance to see some of those. Both came from P and Z, and some of those were were suggestions from our department as well. And on February sixteenth, Mr. Simpson submitted a letter addressing some of the concerns in the conditions recommended by staff. That letter arrived the same day we had P and Z. We shared that letter with P and Z, and there was much discussion about that in P and Z. Madam Chair, in terms of compatibility impacts, again, this is to store fireworks. It will be primarily in a nine thousand six hundred square foot storage building. There are and there will be storage containers storing fireworks. The applicant, I believe, would like to use up to forty storage containers on the property. Again, a loading dock, we gave you the size of the building. There is a residence just southwest of the shop building. There will be some, there will be some fireworks displays for vendors. It will only be consumer fireworks. The applicant said the warehouse is an intrusive, a reasonable use of land and structure due to limited uses in the area. They they provided evidence also that their closest neighbors really do not have a problem with this. The applicant also said the fire marshal and YDOT believe the use is safe and meets requirements. The goods said their hours of operation, their planning, eight AM to five PM. Days of operations, Monday through Saturday. The applicants proposed two part-time resident employees, one full-time, non-resident employee. There are outdoor lighting, sconces on the front of the warehouse, and there's appropriate loading dock lights. Bottom of page eleven, the applicant shared, and probably Mr. Simpson shared, some responses in regard to fireworks shows. One or two per year, wholesale buyers, they anticipate an average of fifty people per show. Not open to the public, will just be for private use. No small wastewater facilities during those shows. No sales to the public during those shows. No vendors during those shore shows. And again, I believe it's still unclear to us what types of fireworks will be displayed, whether will they be consumer or will they be display fireworks, basically for lighting dispellables. Madam Chair, in terms of building setbacks, pro use will not be within twenty feet of a county road right of way. There are no covenants that are proposed or existing. Outdoor lighting has been addressed. No non-conformities on the property. No nuisances reported. No soils reported. This has been perceived. It's not necessary. Access, again, I mentioned that, Highway fourteen A. Domestic water will be provided from onsite systems that are replenished with water from Powell. I mentioned this in the Shone Irrigation District. We talked a little bit about parking. That's at the top of page thirteen of our staff report. Given the size of this, we estimate forty parking stalls. Parking does appear to be adequate for employees. Again, at the time, designated parking for events had not been identified. Now it's been identified. So I think parking appears to be adequate. There is a small wastewater system in the residence, size for four vent routes. Employees, I assume, will use that. Talked about electricity for Garland Light and Power, propane for quoting propane. There will be no permanent signs, only temporary signs, when that's necessary. Solid waste will be disposed, will be serviced, and is serviced by two tough guys. Madam Chair, I'll briefly talk about things, because site plan review for this use is required, and we did, we did go through site plan review. I'll just touch upon things I've not mentioned yet. This use will not impact any lakes, reservoirs, or streams. It's not expected to impact wetlands. Public Works does not require a runoff and erosion control plan. Air quality is not expected to be impacted with this use. This use is not in any overlay district, and this use is not in a planning area where special site planning standards do apply. We have a number of findings, Madam Chair. We have a list of conditions we would like for you to consider, and we are happy to answer the questions that you may have.
Yeah, now my biggest concern, like Jordan's biggest concern was, if they run out of any new construction as far as the setback requirements concerned. And just clarification of the fire marshal's response that Jordan received, because I only had a brief opportunity to answer that this morning. But he had no concerns about any setbacks, anything like that.
Yeah, yeah, Madam Chair and Commissioner Tilden, yeah, I was just, I'm just looking at the email that Jordan received from Mr. Hudson, I believe, on, well, it was on Sunday. Yeah, and I think the only thing I saw was that from a trailer, semi-trailers, metal shipping containers and manufacturing facilities shall be separated from adjacent buildings and structures by no less than ten feet. So really, the only, only setback I see is is ten feet.
Okay, there's no mention there about new construction, you know, like a, like an additional residence on the property?
No, just my understanding is, a residential building without a fire separation, the minimum is ten feet.
Any questions for the board at this time? This is a public hearing, so I would ask for any public comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colin Simpson, representing Chris and Mariah Good. We had a rather lengthy conversation with Planning and Zoning and went through their proposed conditions and the discussion had to do with ATF and rules and regulations and setbacks and a variety of other things that are set out in the conditions. We did present to them evidence that stacking containers is allowed and really a preferred method of storage in these containers. And the containers are the preferred method because they can contain any fire. It's not as if you have a huge explosion when these consumer fireworks go off. It's more of a fire. Hopefully, we'll never have to experience any of that. Hopefully, we'll never have to experience any of that. But the setback idea, the county had proposed 100 feet. All structures used to store fireworks, with the exception of the existing warehouse structure, should be a minimum of 100 feet from the property boundary, and a minimum of 200 feet from any residential structure. Planning and zoning took that to 100 feet from any property line and 100 feet from any residential structure. We still think that that's just not necessary, especially after Mr. Gillivan was indicating what the state fire protection or state fire marshal is saying, that a 10-foot minimum setback. The county setback requirements from a county road are 20 feet. And it's stated in the staff report. There is also a provision that says for any structure that's greater than, for each 5,000 feet of a structure along a county road or public highway, you need another 20. So we propose 50 feet as a compromise here to the 100 that the county is requesting. So 150 feet from the highway right of way line, not the property line, because that's the appropriate setback along the county road or public highway. And then 50 feet from any residential structure, on or off the property. And the goods are willing to agree to that provision. With regard to the county's recommendations, oh, the two addresses. These structures are very close to each other. Then you can see in the photos that existing residence is right there next to the warehouse. Do we need two addresses? We think one would be fine, but we'll leave it up to you.
Let me ask you a question real quick. And I understand there may be a proposal for another residence somewhere right there on the property. Would you think that you would secondly address that one differently? If there's another one built, so emergency services has the opportunity to approach correctly?
I would think so, because that would be further up to the north.
Correct.
And it would need a separate address. But we'll leave that up to you. The staff recommendations today differ a bit from the planning and zoning recommendations in that the staff is continuing to propose no more than 20 storage containers. There are 20 storage containers that are now planning and zoning recommended, allowing another 20 as long as they're paid for upfront in advance. But apparently, the county is backing that down to 20. And also, the county is asking to, the applicant, to obtain a building zoning permit to address the expansion of the warehouse structure that declared between July of 18 and the present. Shortly after the first building was put up, it was expanded. And we've always acknowledged that that happened without a permit. If you think it's appropriate to get a permit, we'll certainly comply with that. But, so, it's the address. We think one is appropriate, and then the setbacks at 50 feet from the highway right of way, and then 50 feet from any residential structure on or off the property. And especially importantly, 40 containers rather than 20. And planning and zoning believe that there was appropriate space on the facility. And you can see on that figure one, the future Conex container expansion would be out there next to that building. And really, these containers require very minimal, if no setbacks, and they're safe.
I'm going to ask what condition you're looking at, or what condition number for the 20 containers? Because I do not see that on the list. And I would be interested in something.
Four and five are the ones we've checked to, and then which one was the addresses?
I don't see the one on the addresses. Other than building permit, no sticks. obtain an approval, building permit to address the expansion. I don't see anything about to address this as a condition, correct?
No, you're right. Oh, one last point. On page 19 of the staff report, and in other places, but on page 19 of the staff report, item 36, it says ATF indicated that storage of display fireworks on the property would be a storage violation. And they repeated that statement a number of times in the staff report. That would be true if it was a storage of display fireworks without ATF approval. Okay, and so I'd like that noted for the record. It's not unilaterally a storage violation if ATF were to approve it. I understand we would have to come back to the commissioners to expand the S U P if that were the case, but ATF could approve that. Any other questions?
Just one, and this is just off the top of my head. Looking at the map, there's an inlet right across the highway. When you're doing fireworks displays and we're talking about dry grasses that are this high, is that an insurance situation, or what happens if there's a heart on neighboring plant?
Insurance, yeah. I'm sure it would be insurance, and you are insured for your displays.
Yep.
Okay, just wanted to be sure that there's some outlet for neighbors, that there is an issue. I hope that they would never be.
And Madam Chair, we've addressed that with neighbors. They have no concerns. They can give us the questions. We appreciate that.
Any others?
Madam Chair, as far as the staff is concerned, the applicant, the application process for a building that's already been built, is that just for your records? Is that why you want them to go through the application process again?
Well, it would be for records, but like with any application process, we, you know, look at the proposed use, we look at setbacks. You know, we always look at, a big one is flood plain. And I believe there's no flood plain in the area. But we look at those things with any proposed building. And we would do the same with this. And we do require a building permit if there's expansion, if there's an addition.
But I mean, if it's already done.
It is.
It's already been looked over.
It is.
So basically, it's just for records.
Well, again, we would address, you know, we would look at all those things.
Madam Chair, a question possibly, staff, applicant, claiming to display fireworks. It is, it's regulated by the state. So do you ever plan to store a display? And if, at that time, that has to be done through the state? And if, correct me if I'm wrong, that is considered then a magazine regulated by the state ATF? Does the county have a say in that at that time?
Yes, it's in statute.
And that's federal, it's not state.
You're right, it's a federal alcohol factoring firearms. It's not a state regulated issue. And it's because it is the display firework, and that's all that ATF regulates. But in the regulation of those display fireworks, there is some confidentiality that goes along with the safety and security of those fireworks. So if ATF approved it, this S U P, possibly, this S U P only covers the consumer fireworks.
And you're good with that?
Is your question, could they ever be stored on this property without county approval?
Right.
I'm not sure.
Because we...
Yeah, the county statute does, that's true. The state statute does defer to the federal regulations on that. But this S U P is written in a way that it says it's for consumer fireworks.
Yeah, just a quick question, going back to the setbacks, and your compromise is 50 feet. Now, the existing residence is on the property. I don't cover the setback on that, it's like 30 or 40 feet or something.
It's 20.
20, 20 feet, okay.
From the building?
Yeah, yeah, and that's fine, where it's serving either way. But I'm just curious, the 100-foot requirement, does that put some type of hardship on you for any potential new construction or any erosion or something like that? Why do you want to compromise?
It's possible, Commissioner Tilden, but maybe on the north side, that it could cause a problem. And it is possible that really the basis for our objection was there were seemingly regulations made up to apply to this that were not justified. And this was one of them. So we continue to fight back against the regulation creep when it's not justified simply by the use. It's just somebody thinking 100 feet is better than what the county regs require.
Well, I mean, my personal opinion, I think staff was looking out for the applicant's safety. And as far as I'm concerned, you want to blow yourself up, that's fine, you know.
That's what the ATF thinks, too. But that, I mean, that's the answer, too. We've continued to try and just minimize the intrusion on the right to use the property.
Can I add just one thing, Madam Chair, and Commissioner Van Gogh? Another response to your reason, changing the topic a little bit, for the addition to get a permit for that. You know, another thing when we ask for building permits, we ask about sub duty. So we don't know with this building addition, we don't know if there was a bathroom put in or not. And that's something that we need to know. And that would be addressed when they get a permit for that addition. Thank you.
My question for staff, is it standard for the county to request a building permit for each and every container?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure.
Any further public comments, questions?
I would like to say something, just to clarify what...
You would just identify?
Chris, good, sorry. I'd like to address what him said, sorry, about the setback with the 10-foot setback. That's for a manufacturing facility only. That's not a storage and not for distribution. It's only for manufacturing. And that was one of the things that Nick Hudson is with me about at the warehouse. He said, you're already following those more stringent guidelines, but you're not really a manufacturer, so you're only a storage and distribution. So he was...
And they don't have any thing for storage and distribution? They just have it for manufacturing?
Thank you.
Madam Chair, move to close the public hearing. Move into second to close the public hearing. Further discussion? What was in favor? Let's move forward.
Go ahead.
I'll take a stand. Madam Chair, I move to approve the good S U P 227, striking condition four, five. I believe the post number with condition three, the applicant announced to change that to the rules of state and federal owner agencies.
Just a quick question. On condition number five, when it talks about the setback, do you want to remove that completely? Or go with our...
I want to remove it completely, because I believe that's already covered by state of the 10-foot. It's good enough for the state, that's good enough for...
Like I said, they want to pull them up on curve.
Right.
Well, the other clarification is, Colin, if I understood you correctly, the setback from the highway is determined by the size of the building and also normal counting. So going back from the highway would be 50 feet. Whether we change, leave this condition in here or not, it would just affect other buildings being built on the property.
That's correct, and I think that, you know, the number 13 is that catch-all, that you have to comply with county standards, right?
Madam Chair, is there a second? We don't have, like, a second, yeah. Just go on with the court of sense.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, did I get a second? Did you second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, my reasoning, if it's eliminated, is because of number three and that's Mr. Simpson, number 13. The setbacks are already, whether it's highway, building, property lines, have already been established, either the county or the state. I don't see what he's doing as business area is any further danger to himself or others. If the agency themselves that are regulating this don't see a problem, I don't think we should. That's the reason why I want to eliminate. If you're willing to, I mean, if they want to compromise at 50, that's fine. I don't see why we need to over-regulate.
Any further discussion on the motion to approve eliminating conditions 45?
Yeah, Madam Chair, just one quick comment. Keep going back to compromise you're willing to do. And, you know, our staff worked very hard on this. I know, very, very passionate about this, for whatever reason, I don't know if it is. I guess I would, I recommend, they're willing to compromise, I'd say let's go 50 feet. I understand where you're coming from. Oh, I would propose that as amendment to your motion. I would second that with you. Mr. Simpson.
Mr. Teal, do you accept that as an amendment to your motion?
May I address the applicant? You already stated you're good with that.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Teal, we prefer your remedy, but...
Point of clarification, then, what is my, if I go on?
If you don't, we vote on the original motion.
Well, excuse me if I could, the choice that we have right now, you can withdraw your motion. I got to withdraw a second. I withdraw my motion, my motion on the amendment. Got to withdraw a second on it. You can restate your motions, or we're going to have to vote on the amendment if the pass of the O P S year.
I just, I hate to be, oh, head of year, now, I mean, I'd like to compromise, too. I just, I really think that we are setting precedents here, continuing to over-regulate, regulate things that are already being regulated. And I just don't see the need for that in the county. I mean, somebody trying to do a business, and then we're putting extra stipulations, whether it's time of use, a number of employees. Another one, actually, I forgot to address, was the number of containers. I mean, how many acres does he have? Why don't we eliminate that to 20? Well, that can be addressed in amendment to the S U P, but then they can come back to that, so.
You're eliminating the number of containers in S U P 4.
Yeah.
Sorry, for the application.
I'm allowed in that. Like it?
You're allowed to remember.
As a friendly amendment, okay. So the motion currently would be then to approve the S U P as requested with staff recommendations, with the exception of number four. And a clarification on number five to be 50 feet, not 100 feet. Is that clear?
And, Madam Chair, is that 50 feet instead of from the property boundary, but 50 feet from the Y dot right of way? Is that, was that what, and 50 feet?
That's the way the regulations are, is the right, Y dot right of way. So, again, I think that's where the 50 depends on.
Madam Chair, just a point, in our P and Z rules regulations, we have a requirement for setback, so maybe not covered in state statute or another area. But, I mean, we can go above...
But it's covered in 13.
Right. And the 50 feet, according to Mr. Simpson, meets those regulations from the Y dot right of way, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay. So it's approved with those changes and recommendations.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Every other day.
Every other day.
I was just trying to get a couple of And we appreciate
Thank you, I believe there are
We appreciate you coming back to staff.
Well, we kind of worked through our break, there is one, unless somebody really needs a quick break that we just missed, we're gonna have to go into the double T. So if it's okay with you, we'll be going. Your product here? Our next order of business is approval of the final plat for double T simple subdivision, number two eighty-three. This will be by Mr. Hillman.
Thank you, thank you, it's always a pleasure, thank you, Madam Chair. So this is final plaque review, the applicant is Mr. Tashiro. This property is in a G R twenty zoning district, the county area is middle south fork, we did receive the final plat application on February fourteenth of this year, obviously included the final plat, we did get a revised final plat on March third. And I will mention here down below that where it says requested action, it is a final plat for a two-lock simple. Those, the the size of lot one is correct, is correct, correct, seventeen point two-three acres. The size of the other lot, twenty-eight point two-three, that is correct. The existing parcel size, actually, that should be forty-five, forty-four, six acres. So we did get confirmation from the surveyor that all those numbers are correct. Again, this is, the request is approval of this final plat, it will be a two-lock simple subdivision. And you see the final plat, figure one, double T simple subdivision two eight-three, as as you notice, or as you know, County Road goes right through this property, it goes through what will be lot two, should this be approved. Location, this proposed subdivision is approximately fifteen and a half miles southwest of Cody, you can see its location relative to Cody in figure two. The property is bisected by County Road six W X, South Fork, also known as South Fork Highway. This property does have the dress of twenty-seven Whitney Drive, as I mentioned, this property is in rural G R twenty zoning district. This property was created by lot size averaging, because as you know, as you know, one property is less, is proposed to be less than twenty acres, one is proposed to be greater than twenty acres. So should this be approved, these lots would have been created by lot size averaging, which is allowed. And the the conditions for lot size averaging is no lot shall be created smaller than the special minimum lot size, which in G R twenty is two acres. And no lot should be created where the average is less than that twenty-acre number. If both of those things have been that. So the special minimum lot size, two acres, both lots are bigger than that, the average lot size is twenty acres, the average between these two lots is greater than twenty acres, because we started with a approximately, what, forty? I forget, forty-six, yeah. So lot size averaging, those requirements have been met, that is allowed. Madam Chair, bottom of page five, neighboring land use, you see in figure four, the land surrounding this is a mixture really of agriculture and residential. In terms of site characteristics, lot one is currently used, proposed lot one is currently used for egg purposes. And much of the northwest corner is in the map flood plain of the Shoshone River. Portion of lots one and two are, I'm sorry, the lots one and portion of lot two north of County Road slopes gently, much of proposed lot two, however, located south of the County Road has steep slopes. And you're aware of that, I know you're aware of this property, I know you saw some some letters and emails from the public that are concerned. Whitney Drive is a private road, and it enters this property in the southwest corner. This property is not within a viable municipality, that review is not required, we have a total map in figure five. In terms of notice of intent to subdivide, that was the only requirement, because this is a simple subdivision, which doesn't require public hearings. On top of that, this is final plat, that does not require any public hearing. That notice of intent to subdivide was published November fourth of last year, November twelfth of last year, in the Paltry Fugue. I assume it was in the Paltry Fugue, I don't know, possibly because of cost reasons. And our regs say that notice only has to go in in a in a county newspaper. It doesn't say it has to be in the closest, yeah, it doesn't have to be in the closest newspaper. We we notified agencies, Hart County Fire Protection District, they responded, they said this is in the boundaries, they listed the equipment they would respond with. They would require roads and water crossings be built to our county standards. T C T responded, they have wireless available in the area, and they would likely be able to provide internet to phone. Cody Conservation District, they submitted a SOLES report, which courses required, and identified the SOLES types on the property, and we we shared with you their their summary letter. Hart County School District number six responded, said they will work to ensure that should bus service be necessary, they would provide it. Rocky Mountain Power, they have the capacity to serve both those lots. Electrical service will require, of course, right-of-ways and permits. And as you know, of course, with the subdivision, utilities are not required to the adjacent or stuff, but we do like to say whether or not it's available or if it's currently being served. Postal Service said they could provide bailboxes. Game and Fish, in regard to aquatic resources, they have no concerns. We didn't get any email from Game and Fish, we shared with you, in that email, it talked about this property being entirely in crucial mule deer winter range. And as a result, they had some other, I believe, recommendations, but they recommend no development, I assume, building activity from November fifteenth to the end of April each year. The treasurer stated that property taxes are current, Public Works responded, they said accesses are available from County Road six W X to both roads. Any new accesses will require a right-of-way permit, they said they have no concerns regarding drainage and erosion control. Weed Pest responded, Mary did an inspection, notches weed were present. She said a weed plant will be required, and the applicant did submit to us approved re-control. And a water distribution plan has also been received, approved plan has been received from Lakeview Irrigation District. We've we've had several public comments, one, I think, public comment document was signed by eight residents. They expressed concern regarding potential future development on that steep hillside, and the fact that it's in crucial mule deer winter range. Madam Chair, P and Z looked at this sketch plan on December fifteenth of last year, you saw their conditions. One condition that's been met was a response from Weed Pest. Another condition that was met was a response from Public Works. Another condition that's been met on the final plat, one, the Right to Farm and Ranch Act. And also one of their conditions was language regarding any purchasers would not necessarily have rights to streams or or water flows, that condition has been met. Another, the the final plat also contains a condition regarding lot size averaging. And the plat does contain a condition regarding water wells being approved by the state engineer's office. The final plat committee looked at this final plat on February eighteenth, they had some suggestions, corrections, and we did receive a revised final plat on March third, that was in figure one, you had a chance to see that. Otherwise, all the other suggestions or submissions for final plat review have been met, conditions, notes, things like that, supporting documents. Madam Chair, we have some findings that we found, and we recommend, we have one recommended condition, and we're recommending approval of this provided you agree. We're happy to answer questions that you might have.
To start with, when you talk about the lot size averaging and the twenty-acre lot splits, and how those broke up, can these lots be split again?
No. What would you
If these lots could be split again, then the answer is, I didn't think so, though, I wanted to be sure that that was clear. Questions right now?
Oh, Madam Chair, given given our current county regulations, being G R twenty, yes, yes.
Madam Chair, is the applicant here?
No.
Engineer is.
My question, just partial staff, you mentioned under notices, county newspaper. Does it say county in our regulations, or does it say local?
It does say, I don't remember exactly what it says, local newspaper.
We looked it up yesterday, and it does say
Local, and I think that is absolutely terrible that we put this in the Powell paper when it's pretty obvious that it's in the Cody area. In the future, I'd like to see notices put into the most local. If it were laying in between Powell or Cody, it's only regulated putting one or the other, but I I mean, I think that's kind of very cool, that to put a legal notice in a paper that you know the majority of the residents interested in it are gonna be reaching, I just have to statement for that. I know that's not you guys.
Anything else right now?
Yeah, I just got a quick comment, because I was, question you had for exactly the way that I had, I think the letter that we had for the surrounding neighbors, that's pretty much is taken care of, because there will be no further development of it, without rules and regulations.
This is not a public hearing, but we are allowed to take public input on anything we'd like to, and desire the commission is to hear people. So if you have comments on this or would like to make them at this time, please do so. Please identify yourself, and for the record.
Alan Rosenbaum, Madam Chair, thank you, Commissioners, thank you. You know, our concern mainly was the development, any future development occurring on the steep hillside, which would erode the critical mule deer habitat. And that's, and in in that same thought, there are landslides on both sides of this property, of this hillside. So it does indicate some stable, unstable conditions, we're not gonna debate whether something could be engineered, erode up that steep hillside for for residents. So, but our concern is the displacement of ground with development on that hillside related to the mule deer habitat. And we would just like to see some kind of restriction placed on that side of the highway, not eliminating any kind of development on the other side of the highway, but on that south side, on a steep hillside, conserving that area for the mule deer, there's other wildlife there too, they're not the only ones. But that's, and I know it may be too late, but that would be our concern, is that someone else takes control of that property and then decides to develop that side of the road for whatever reason, we don't know what the reasons are. So that would be our concern. Thank you.
Anyone else like to comment?
Madam Chair, thank you, my name is Steve Devanis, thank you, Commissioners. I, without saying the same thing that Alan has, my concerns are the mass wasting that can happen on that hill, we live across this hill, Joe, you know where we live. And I talked to a man at the county department the other day, I would be glad to give you his name in private. But he, I asked him if there were any logs of when the county trucks were called out for the ice floe that would come across the road right in this area, because this hill is so saturated. And he said they didn't keep logs like that, but he understood exactly where we were talking about, and he asked, he said, please go make your case, because we don't need any more disruption on this steep part. They're gonna be addressing some of it in the future when they redo the South Fork Road, but the ice does come down through there, and our concern is, my concern, if development is allowed on that steep part, it not only disrupts this habitat, but then it's gonna create a bigger wasting situation. Even where I live, the hill across west is very vegetated, but we will hear slips happen. Right now, they haven't come across the road yet, but I think maybe more work needs to be done to look at the steepness of this before you approve it. And I agree with Alan, we're not trying to limit a private property, right? We're just saying that in this particular case, on this particular slope, with the wildlife being involved in the vegetation, that once we disrupt this, it's disrupted forever. So, thank you very much.
If I could, you know, we already stated with the present rules and regulations, we have it's of G R twenty. And there will be no other subdivision of this particular property. So that's the development you're talking about, if someone wishes to build a house or something like that, that's where you, that's your definition of development.
That's our concern.
And I'm not sure going through the subdivision process is where you address that, I think you would address that when anybody that purchased the property would want to build something, that would be addressed through the building permit process, I think.
We'd have to give that to staff, but there is correct me if I'm wrong, there is some land on top, above that hill, that could be built on. It's it's there's not a very big piece, but there is some, I guess the engineer is here too, so looking at the parcel, but I guess the disturbance would be on the hill, because that's the only way to get there. I don't know whether our building regulations come into play, as they've said, there could be future abilities through engineering or whatever to build a road up that hill, even if it's a single owner that has the place. A future house could be built on that side. If we, if there's no restrictions, but I guess that's the concern, I had this discussion a little bit with the
Maybe the portion that's on the hill may be based on the south side of the road. There is adequate area to build a house on top of the hill.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Tilden, I'm I'm just looking on page seven, and and I don't remember the conditions on the ground, but but looking in the total map, it appears like there's a small corner in what will be, what is that, lot two, proposed lot two, that that appears to be flat, but I don't know how big that is.
And the and the only access to that would would be up the hill, there's no additional access from up the hill?
I think there's a private there is a
Yes, Davis-Raw Road is present there, but that part of the property, that's does not have access, there's no easement to that property via that road, so yes, it would have to come up the hill.
Madam Chair, probably shots with engineering associates, yeah, these conversations are correct, there is a chunk up on top of the hill, and when we had our pre-application with the owner, he wanted to try to build something up on top of there, so we reached out to the neighbors, which none of them really were inclined to give them an easement to go on that private road over there. So then we looked at what it would take to build a road up there, and as the time of the pre-app, it was cost prohibitive to build a road up off of that hill to get to the top of that property, so he was looking at giving this land to his daughter, but he couldn't do a family exemption. And and I don't know where he stands today on where he was planning on putting a house on that lot too. So, but the last conversation I had with him, it was gonna be north of the road for his daughter, but I don't know that.
I guess in our respect, or since I've been here for several years, we've had this situation before. So I think we're all kind of trying to figure out what the possibilities are, what can or can't be done in, in dealing with this. I, Commissioner Tilden, you've been here a long time. Have you seen anything?
Uh, this, this is the first for me.
Um, I guess I would ask this, do we have to answer this today or can we do a little bit more research to figure out what the possibilities are through the county regulations?
Yeah, we can table a decision. Now, it has been.
Thanks.
That term you got a motion in the back.
If I may, is there any way to take this back to planning and zoning since we did not have any idea of it being published in the Powell Tribune? We didn't know if there would be a chance to address this in planning and zoning first. Is there any way to roll this back, as you guys know?
I think that's what we're trying to figure out is what are the regulations and how, how we do or don't move forward. So I guess, um, with that and with the concerns that we've had and new information brought to light through the advertising situation, which is certainly allowed, they follow the process as our rules breed. It just wasn't very conducive to what was happening. So we need to, to work on that too. But, um, I would request that we table an action on this for further information. Close call.
So, Madam Chair, if I could, what more information is it that you're looking for?
I'm wondering if there is a way or, or something in the regulations that would allow us to put a a wildlife corridor restriction type of thing through there? If there's anything that we can say this is kind of a, a no build zone, I don't know. I guess that's what I'm.
Well, I'm, I'm in favor of that just simply because you said, you said no further development. But when it comes to a family exemption, we don't have any regulations to restrict that. So.
This is a tough one.
Do we need an action?
A motion to postpone a decision.
I would make a motion to table at least the final plat for the W P. So we can, maybe a rule to, to.
I was saying.
Moved to second to table a decision on a double T, simple set file plat. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So we'll work on this, see what we can come up with. This does not normally work through another public notice of any type. So you would just have to monitor our agendas, um, if you would please. Um, it will be put back on the agenda before we would make a decision. So you can keep an eye on it that way, so that's I'd say. Okay, we're a little behind. And next on our agenda is Cody Conservation District primary election ballot for mill levy.
Sure. Just like the movie, we're back. Um, well, we have that, we've got a request for funding for advertisement also and, uh, update. We submitted to the, uh, the, uh, government of Teton County Conservation District. And we came to amiable decision to move the Cody Conservation District boundary to the county line and reclaim the party old stone that was some, was somewhere that achieved the Teton. Um, the letters, they, they concur and they're both at, uh, one of the, um, the board of the ag who makes it, this is the board of ag where they makes it finalize that decision. So I just want to let you know where that's sitting right now, so.
Okay, then they would notify our elections.
Yeah, they'll notify, they'll notify the accessories.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you for doing that. That helps our elected ballot, so thank you.
Anytime we can help the clerks, so don't have to work so hard.
Appreciate that, Matt.
Oh, boy.
Bobby just gets to kick, kick out and be making friends and influencing people. Yeah. Got to keep it light-hearted. Um, we have a petition before you all that we submitted to the county clerk requesting that the, uh, that a question be placed on the primary election for, to impose a mill, to impose a mill levy for the purpose of funding the conservation district. Um, I hope you all have had an opportunity to take a look at that and if you're here to answer any questions on it, if you may all have any.
Do you have any questions? Discuss this a little bit earlier, when you were here before, whether or not it would come next or not, so. Anything? Okay.
I'll, I'll make my, my approval.
Second.
Moved to second to approve the petition from the Cody Conservation District to place mill levy on the primary ballot. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck, bud. I really, really hope we go through this.
Thank you. And I have a good question for you all. Um, as mentioned, last time we were here, the possibility of providing us with some funding for educational purposes to the community. Uh, we had a number available for that, but we were a bit unsure how to present that to you all. If you all wanted it in writing or verbally today, um.
Um, what's the pleasure of the board? And we talked about it, uh, at the level of, they're not, they don't come under our special funding requests normally. So it's not in that process. And I'm not familiar with any other processes except for to, to come and ask, um, be out there for some funding.
Well, my only comment is that I'm not sure that it would be appropriate to spend taxpayer dollars on this. I know we've had this discussion in the past when the county adds for an additional, uh, one cent or wherever, or cap tax or whatever it is. We've never spent any county money to do that. With the exception of one time when we had the consultant come up and basically run the survey for it and deciding what was, what people in Park County would go with a dental pack or a specific service stack. Now, we did use county dollars for that because we considered the education. So I, I'm trying to talk and I don't think I can forget myself.
Um, I believe the information that we are looking at is educational for our residents in Park County as far as the conservation district is concerned. I understand what you're saying and I'm trying to figure out a different way to look at that.
Madam Chairman, if I could, I kind of thought through that a little bit. It was statutorily prohibited from, just as you all are, to advocate for or against any, any type of attacks, whether it be, uh, cap tax or mill levy, that such like that. What we would like for is an opportunity to, as we've used the word educate, educate the voters on what a conservation district does, uh, what the benefit of the conservation district is, and not advocate for or against. And to also, let the, uh, the taxpayers know, the voters, that, you know, there are thirty-four conservation districts in, in, in twenty-three counties. Out of those conservation districts, there are two that are unfunded. And when I say funding, either through mill levy or through county funding. And there's only two, and both of those are located in Park County. So there is a third conservation district in Park County, Matiti, and they are funded by mill levy. So our intent is just to provide additional educational opportunities here. We are doing a mailer that's going out that is grant funded. And we just want the people to be able to make an educated decision in what they are going, whether they are for or against it. We're, we're not going to take that position, but we want to provide them with information and resources to be able to make an informed decision. That's all we want to do.
I'm curious, you're going to come, you have a written proposal?
We, we don't have a written proposal. Our, our mailing that's going out is a six-page holdout and a letter from our chairman, uh, to the voters. Um, it's our intent to craft something, granted, we're going from a six-page holdout to a order page ad in a newspaper. So we'll be providing resources, uh, we'll be providing some information and let the people make a decision at that point there. We haven't done it because of the aspect of, we don't know what we'll fund it.
Yeah, well, I'm just wondering from a dollar perspective, I'm not sure.
Oh, I'm, oh, that, I'm sorry, that, we're looking for no more than a thousand dollars. The amount, huh? I'm rounding up here, uh, nine sixty-eight was the amount. And that would be three, three pieces in the newspaper in three, three weeks.
In that newspaper ad?
In, in the Cody newspaper, Commissioner Field. Uh, so, and it is because the Cody Conservation District is within this area here. We don't call it from the Powell, from the Powell area. So it would be a newspaper in the local area and for an amount of a hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Madam Chairman, I mean, I'd certainly be willing to take a look at it. And you can come before us with a special request at any time.
That's what I was thinking, but I guess my, my other thing is, is in, in discussion on supporting or not supporting a tax, not doing that so much as educating the people to what the conservation district does for us and the importance of having them involved in the county. I think is that the thing that, the education part of it is so important to me, to help people understand what you guys do. And the results that we get from that and the work that we do, I think is the harder part for me.
And I'm going to take a prime example of that is, uh, I engaged with a gentleman on Saturday who was just, I can't believe you guys are coming out with the taxes. This is just nonsense. You're going to raise, you're trying to raise my taxes. And I'm like, no, I'm not trying to raise your taxes. I'm trying to raise our taxes. I'm, I'm, I'm a property owner too. Uh, I said, do you know what the conservation district does? No, I don't. Do you care what the conservation district does? No, you're trying to take my money. And the thing I imparted upon him again during our discussion was, be educate yourself about this. I'm not anti-tax. I'm for responsible stewardship, stewardship of the taxpayer's money. And the conservation district has real value in, in, in the role of what local government is trying to do for the community.
Do you think it's possible to prepare something that shows us what this ad would look like and bring it back to us like April fifth? Um, with the request for the fact?
And we can, we can do that.
Just to show the educational part of it.
And just for our planning purposes, uh, if we were to come back on April fifth and you all said, yes, we're moving forward, we can move forward on that, uh, when we'd be looking at the obligation for funding for that? Is that something in the new fiscal year or is that something current?
That's up to us.
Madam Chair, I, uh, I'm just looking at last year's budget, special funding requests. Actually, Cody Conservation is on our, get on our list. And they actually came in with a request of maybe eight hundred and twenty-three dollars, of which we denied simply because we denied several, that's zero, because budgetary issues. As Joe mentioned, we can, uh, income to us at any time through the year. We prefer it all come with budget time for that request.
That's for the next fiscal year, right?
This was this year.
Right, but I mean, if they were to come in under that scenario, that's for next year's budget. Okay.
Right.
Okay. I guess we're trying to just not discover whether this would be spent in this year or if it can wait till after.
Well, we can have a, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, we can, these numbers are budgeted at budget time. But I mean, if, if, uh, Kerry for Brown Animals came in and said, we need to have that paid for for special fundraisers and ask for more than what they originally requested. I mean, they have the same opportunity. Um, and I just saw, I guess I'm in support of giving a thousand dollars to get the education out there as long as it's not one-sided. The other thing I wanted to mention was, um, I think we can, you might want to check with, uh, I'm not sure who's in charge, IT or whatever, but, uh, put a, a page on our county website. Could we not do that? It would be a link, just as an education, the link or if nothing else?
A link on the county webpage?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, we do have a link on there to our budget and, um, and contact and other information like that. But that's, it's not a, a fully informative type thing. It's just more a governmental type.
Question, Tilden?
Yeah, I just kind of, kind of heard what Lloyd's talking about here. Uh, you know, it'd be a matter of timing on your focus part. If you wanted to come with us for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three with a request, and it was passed, then the money would be available July one.
Right.
If you wanted to get your educational stuff out there now, you came with this first week of April, and we granted the request, the money would be available to you whenever you wanted it. So I guess what I'm saying is, being involved in some of these in the past, it's a matter of timing with the public. To me, if you give it to them too early, all the affirmation, they forget about it. But right at the end, just before people go to the polls, if you give them with all of this stuff, maybe they'll remember that. Just the point.
And I just didn't know when we would be able to extend these or if they had to be extended by a certain time, but.
I mean, you know, personally, from my perspective, but I've stated all along, very much supportive of Cody Conservation District. I wish to get a good fund it all along. And I'm certainly very supportive of it. I would look, look at the request very positive. Okay, thank you.
So do you want to, what, what's your pleasure? Do you want to look for a spot on the April fifth agenda or do you want to think about it and call Molly and we do it?
So Madam Chair, we will look for a spot on the April fifth agenda. We've got, we've been working on a, try to pare down the benefits page of the, of our webpage. And I will have her contact behind two people that's going to get a look to our webpage on the county page.
We should be able to do that without any cost involved. Um, but yeah, Molly will pencil you in on the agenda for the fifth to come back. Kind of a draft and an official proposal, and we'll put it on the agenda.
Great.
Good day, Madam Chair.
Madam Chairman, just logistic wise, if they, if you did approve the, the funding on the, on the fifth, then the check would be cut on the next, uh, the next eighteen month. That should be the, like, nineteen.
By the end of April.
Yeah. So it was pretty good.
So it didn't have a burden, I mean, we just covered initially and then that would be the makeup.
Okay.
But thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He's under the influence of a buddy. We're watching a buddy for a couple of minutes. Oh, cool. Of course, by our, today.
Hey, the next thing on our agenda is, uh, Department of Homeland Security Director Jeff Horn, coming in about some homeland security grants and the regional six plan.
Yes. What would you think?
Thank you.
Um, first thing, we have three grants that have been sitting around and we need to get them, decide to get it back down to state homeland security. The first one is going to be for the emergency manager, the partial salary grant at Howard Care. Uh, next one, these were all done again by my predecessor. So they've been sitting around a little bit. I've tried to get as much information in terms of the background as I could get, part of bringing it in here. But the first one is going to be for a power monitoring equipment for generators at our critical facilities. I don't want to know for sure. It's going to be at the fairgrounds since that's a primary evacuation center. So we have, I'm not sure I'm familiar with, we have fifty-eight hundred dollars for those. And, um, those were all identified again through fire and, uh, risk management is gaps that we have in our physical ability to secure our primary infrastructure. So that's going to be the second one. Third one is going to be electronic key paddles for the E O C. So traditionally we've been using keys, locking key for access. And I think during the COVID, when there are a lot of different people coming in and out, issuing keys and having access became kind of an issue. And it's going to be the same scramble pad they have the law enforcement center and it'll be monitored by I T. So they have familiarity with it. The techs have, uh, familiarity with it. And I believe from what I can tell, it's going to be every individual will have an assigned code. So you can actually restrict access to certain rooms. We can grant access, uh, on a capacity basis. So that's going to be for thirty-six thousand nine forty-five seventy-five cents. So those are the, the three grants that have been kind of sitting around a while. I apologize. We got them in order now.
What's the amount on the partial salary grant?
The number for our salary was forty-eight thousand five hundred.
Madam Chair, uh, Jeff, we, uh, do you need to announce for the fairgrounds one more time?
Okay, for the, uh, emergency generator power monitoring equipment, that's going to be five thousand eight hundred dollars even.
Okay, and then one more time for the.
The key pads are thirty-six thousand nine forty-five and seventy-five cents. Even those, and from what I read, that estimate for those key pads, because of COVID, they weren't able to come out and actually do a physical assessment of the facility, so those are based on schematics, they sent the company. So, yeah, knowing that going in, and then the last piece of business I have is going to be the hazard mitigation plan for Region Six, been approved by FEMA for adoption. It's a hefty document, it's five hundred and something pages, and that is ready to go across the board. Matiti signed it last week, and PAL and Cody are going to sign it this week. So we'll be, the current plan expires in April, so we're trying to avoid any kind of lapse in the, uh, can't think like how it is it comes with that. So that is ready to go, I have a adoption resolution letter.
And these have all been reviewed by the Park County Attorney?
They have. The letter of adoption.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? We have three grants and the twaming Region Six hazard mitigation plan.
Madam Chair, my quick, on, on these three grants, they're all a hundred percent or are they matching in any way?
These are all going to be a hundred percent with the exception of the, uh, emergency manager, that's going to be half and half county.
And that one was?
Forty-eight thousand five hundred.
And that covers your, your, half of your way, right?
Yes, sir. Well, it covers everything that goes into the wage, so it's, it covers the wage, it covers the insurance, everything that comes with it, I believe there's a little bit in there training.
But now it don't exist.
That's my understanding.
That's what he's been told.
Do we need to, Madam Chair, do we need to handle these individually, or can we help release the grants and get them?
All together.
Madam Chair, I move to approve, uh, request for all three grants. You need to list that.
I moved in second to approve the three grants as requested, salary, power monitoring, and electronic key pads. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, okay. And the.
Madam Chair, I approve that we approved the Region Six Plan as presented.
Second?
Okay, I moved in second to approve the one and Region Six hazard mitigation plan, and sign, is it Chairman only to sign?
On this one, no, it's going to be.
All together, okay.
And then for, for the grants, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? Have all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, what's your questions?
Jeff, you want to give me those, and then Bill, Bill sign them and then Molly, exactly.
Okay.
Take them off.
Okay. You have anything else?
I just didn't, unfortunately. Thank you for seeing me.
Oh, you're welcome. Something comes up that's forward was found, I'm getting it to our.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, um, the next thing, we actually had on the agenda was the Loopak applications, and I think through staff, we've had a little bit of discussion on getting that handled, we have set up interview dates for the twenty eighth, twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. And we have put some questions out, uh, after looking at the preliminary list a week ago. So we're waiting for those to come back in to make some final interview setups for those two days. So I think unless there's anything else or any other questions, and the board members have it this time, we'll make sure that we have that final list updated out to you today. And have the list of those we received the question, questions back from, put those on the sharepoint, so you can read through the questions, answers that we received back to PAL. And if you have any concerns, myself or Molly know, open them there. But sure plan on that twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth.
Well, Madam Chair, my question is for the different, the twelve different areas, are we going to try to set a limit on two, three? And what, what is that?
Well, we had originally talked about, at least, okay, originally talked about one for each planning area that would represent that planning area, so there'd be twelve. And then those other specialty areas is where we would pick up other people, whether it's.
I understand, but I mean, at what point are we going to narrow these down? I know over the next time, but do you have a date? Obviously, before the twenty-eighth, we've got to get responses out from their interviews, so what is our date looking like to have two, three, or applicant for interview people?
Next Friday, or if you'll read through the question and answers.
I missed that, you missed my piece.
Okay, she talked about next Friday, having that information back in. Um, and Molly is going to sort by planning area, what we have on question to answer, so we know whether we have each planning area represented. We do know that in the applications received, most of the people also checked other areas that they have expertise. So we have plenty of people listed in the other areas, be it wildlife, energy, all those sorts of things.
Okay. And I know we're trying to cram a whole lot real quick.
Absolutely.
So I'm, I'm just looking at the calendar, on Friday, which is the twenty-fifth.
So.
On Friday, we're going to narrow it down to the.
This Friday. Okay, this Friday.
Sweet.
Oh, sorry, yeah, yeah, because that's, because Molly's going to need a few days to get those all scheduled.
Right, that's why, it's like.
This Friday, so we're going to be sending you quite a bit of information in the next couple of days as those questions come back.
March twenty-eighth.
And I'm going on vacation.
March twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth are our interview dates.
March, not April.
And you're going on vacation when? Oh, I thought you just said you were going to be on vacation, wait, okay. Oh, okay. You're reading fast. Okay. If, if there's anything that comes up, let me know or let Molly know, and we'll work through it, or do I, I guess everybody's working on these lists, trying to get you as much information. This actually got shortened up a little bit too much, um, to get this process. And super excited about the number of people that applied, show interest in the process, so that's part of it, is we have a lot of applications, had a lot of applications. Okay? Um, the last thing is, Commissioner Tilden had, and you had asked, uh, us to put on the agenda the discussion of the BLM Natural Resource Management Plan.
Okay.
Um, if you want to forward that, and I don't know if Joy wanted to be in here for this discussion, because she also was reviewing that, but, uh, you can see if she's interested, but Joy, I think it's not.
Uh, yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. Uh, the only reason I had to put this on is because when we originally went through the RMP process, and the inventory of LWC's land with wilderness characteristics was flawed, there's no question about that. And compromise that we reached at that time with the BLM was, is those LWCs would not be managed for their wilderness characteristics, but we were told during the RMP process that they would come back and re-inventory those lands with wilderness characteristics. And we have asked numerous times at different regions for the BLM if they intend to do that. And the answer has always been, yeah, we intend to do it, but we're not sure when. So I just thought this might be a good, a good opportunity to approach the BLM, and, or if you read email from Molly in her second paragraph, that this evaluation is not intended to initiate any of the following RMP maintenance actions, amendments or revisions, preparation of NECA compliance documents, additional inventory of public land or resources in the planning area for evaluation of the twenty fifteen, twenty nineteen, greater safety escalator decisions and amendments, and it goes on, however, evaluation may identify areas that would require RMP maintenance or amendments in the future. And so I guess they are willing to look at it, at least that's what that sentence is telling me. And it's very important that we get the LWCs re-inventory, because right now, Big Horn Basin, we have three hundred and seventy-some thousand acres of lands with wilderness characteristics. And the way that rules and regulations are right now, as part of the tier, with a triple pin, the director can say, okay, we're going to start managing. And that's scary stuff. And so I guess my only comment, other than that, I think the plan is, is working. Not necessarily the way I want it to work, but it's working. And so that would be the only comment that I have, that we would write, write them a letter requesting that they honor their, uh, agreements and re-inventory lands with wilderness characteristics.
Madam Chair, I kind of got through that document, somewhere towards the end, uh, not the end end, but the end of their main spiel, they talked about the WSAs. Did I catch that? Um, but it didn't say the LWCs specifically, I didn't know if they were addressing those as part of that, or if they, because they did say something about reevaluating them or something, or, I can't remember the exact line, I just remember reading a little snippet in there about that. So.
Oh, we, we talked, we talked about.
The evaluation?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And what's the abbreviation, the WSA versus?
WSA is Wilderness Study Area.
Okay.
LWC is Lands With Wilderness Characteristics. But I don't know if in their document, they kind of lumped the two in terms of what they're reviewing, so it might just be a question.
Do you remember if there's a date on here for responses?
Yeah, it was like March or twenty-eighth or something, or thirty-first, it's the end of this month.
Some, uh, March, March twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
So.
Okay. Commissioner Tilden, would you want to work with, uh, with Joy and Molly to craft a letter, uh, to go, and I guess we need concurrents with the board?
Do you want to address the WSAs also? Personally, I think, the way it is right now, I probably better leave them, leave them alone.
I would make a motion to draft the letter with the chairman's signature, uh, ask for them to, I guess, boot them off. Come up with at least response.
Well, specifically. Would you?
Do I have a second? First, then we can clarify.
No.
Yeah.
Okay, discussion?
Well, I'd like the, the motion clarified. Or amend the two, two state what the specific, the, the lands with wilderness characteristics.
So LWCs, okay. Okay. I think we're all okay.
I just want to just continue support, we don't support.
The only point I just got to sign I have is, you know, moving forward, the deadline is March twenty-third, which is next week. Uh, so I guess we can draft the letter, email it to everybody, if you can make any comments or changes, and then we'll send it out. So the motion probably should have something, I'm sorry, have, as far as the timeline is concerned. And the other question would be just, does everybody want to sign it, or just the chair? I think the chair would be sufficient, okay? Not going to problem, second matter.
Okay, so the motion is that we send a letter in regards to the BLM on the lands with wilderness characteristics, and they're continuing with their promise to review that.
Right. Is there, is there anything else at this point, if there's anything else anybody wants to move into comment? That's the only one that I really want to.
I have a lot of comments, but I think it's a total waste of time with the person in charge. I'm sorry.
I would, I would agree.
Okay, so let's, uh, let's vote on the motion, it's on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and you want to close? Okay, so you all worked on the letter and, okay. That's our agenda for today.
And Joy, if you could come up with it, with Molly, any comments you might have.
Well, if you can just email us your spiel of what you just said, like, what is it you're asking? Well, just say like, you, tell us what you're wishing for.
I spiel all of that.
Yeah, but if you could, what, what is it you're wishing for, BLM to review specifically? Like, what promises is it that you're asking them to upkeep? And then I think it'd be really easy for us to throw that on letterhead and, you know, craft it. I'd just be afraid if I were to draft it, I don't know what you're talking about specifically, so, yeah.
Okay, I'll come in tomorrow, and we'll come up with something. And the chair will do a jerk, thank you. Aye, aye. Boy didn't told you.
Reading like, I'm an I.
Are you sure?
I'm trying to figure out what the hell I did.
We all wonder that, we.
Well, when the hell was I contacted by this Kirk Rees guy? You all got the same email?
You were.